You like it?
Yeah, I do. I do it. That's a good thing you call it.
Welcome to the September Business Meeting of the Rock Hill School District. It is now my pleasure to introduce Brayden Cowser, a fifth grader at Leslie Elementary School, to open our meeting.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Vining, members of the school board, Superintendent Cook, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I'm Brayden Cowser, and I'm honored to represent Leslie Elementary School and bring two greetings from my principal, Dr. Dixon, and have faculty and staff of Leslie. Please stand with me at this time for a moment of silence and remember standing for the Pledge Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for It's now my pleasure to tell you about my experience as a member of the...
Brayden has got his mom here tonight, Renee Carmelo, and also one of his friends from Leslie, Kayden Dotson. He's also a fifth grader at Leslie. His principal, which he's already mentioned, is Dr. Dixon. She's standing over there in the corner trying to be not obvious. And Kayden likes to play football, basketball, and video games. So, the schoolwork wasn't in there, but I'm assuming that's one of the things he likes as well. But I'll now open it up to board members for any comments or questions. Ms. Douglas, I know you have one.
Yes, I'm going to go and stand beside Brayden so he can finish with what he was going to say.
Brayden, she won't buy it, I promise.
What did you stop to pledge? Tell you your experience? Okay, go ahead with your experience.
I've been at Leslie for six years, kindergarten through fifth, and I've been having a good year in fifth grade. I have a nice teacher, Ms. Kevin Nero Price. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you for inviting me to represent Leslie Elementary School.
And Brayden, since you're in the fifth grade, what is one thing you can tell Dr. Dixon to change, Ms. Dixon, to change about your school?
I think there should be adding on to the playground, maybe swings or something.
Okay. Is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Now, you have been in fifth grade for about two, three weeks or so. How do you feel about being in the fifth grade, are you the senior at Leslie now?
It feels good.
Okay.
So, I got a question. I got a question. I don't know if my mic is on. Yeah, it is. So, I got a question. What are you gonna... You said you had had a great time at Leslie, and you've been there for six years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what are you gonna miss the most when you go on to middle school next year?
I think I'm gonna miss all my teachers that helped me get to fifth grade and middle school.
Mm-hmm.
That's about it.
But that's something... That's a good answer, though. That's a good answer.
Anne?
I'm very proud to see you here. I'm so pleased that you were able to represent your school. Think of all the other students who could have been here but are not here because they didn't do some of the things that you've done to be recognized and to be able to recognize and to be able to represent them. Can you think of anything in particular that you might have done that make you stand out as far as your other classmates and schoolmates do that helps you be where you now are?
I think it's some of my grades and how I act in the class.
What are some of your grades and how you act in class?
My grades? I've only had one B and the rest are As.
Wow.
And I'm mostly kind to others, and I help them out when I'm finished with my work.
My goodness. I'm so proud to hear that, and I know that your teacher is proud to hear that and your principal is proud to hear that, too. And when your classmates watch you on TV, they will be proud to know it, too. So, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Wendy?
Brayden, you did a great job today, and you know what? I really like your smile. There it goes again. I knew it was hidden in there someplace. I know it can be nervous to talk in front of a bunch of people, huh? Yeah. But thank you for being here today. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Brayden, Ms. Douglas, who's standing there with you, would it surprise you to know that she is retired from two districts as a sixth-grade teacher? And if your middle school teacher was like Ms. Douglas, would that be a good thing?
I think so.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you, Brayden.
You're welcome.
Good job.
The news media was notified in writing of the agenda on Friday, September 21st. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Terry Hutchinson, seconded by Helena Miller. Any discussion? All right. All of them favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. We have one group that's asked to speak to the board tonight. It is not an agenda item, which doesn't fit into policy, but it is my recommendation that we allow them an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting so that we get our business out of the way, if that's all right with the board. All right, so we'll do that. Before we go to executive session, we'll invite them up to address the board. All right. Dr. Cook?
Well, Brayden, like you, I need Ms. Douglas, too, so I'm gonna ask Ms. Douglas to come up here and join me, okay? Ms. Douglas, would you come join me, please?
He needs help, too.
That's right. All right. Well, this is always one of the best parts of our meeting to me, is for us to recognize some outstanding individuals, and so want to take some time to do that this evening. First off, I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Karen Roof, physical education teacher at India Hook Elementary School, in receiving the prestigious award of 2018 South Carolina Association for Physical Education and Sports Teacher of the Year, elementary PE level. She is recognized for excellence in promoting physical literacy within programming at India Hook. Ms. Roof will be formally presented with the award at the state convention in November in Myrtle Beach. Tonight, we recognize Ms. Roof for this honor and her outstanding contribution to students, school, and the teaching profession. I believe her principal, Ms. Guyton, is also here. Ms. Roof, come on up and let us recognize you. Congratulations. Can I take a picture with you?
Of course, of course.
Physical literacy, and you're wearing a boot tonight?
A couple, a couple boots.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last spring, Rock Hill Police Department Sergeant Mike Johnson was named the South Carolina School Resource Officer of the Year. Sergeant Johnson has served with the Rock Hill Police Department for 12 years and is the supervisor over SROs in the district who work with the Rock Hill Police Department. The award brings together SROs from the state who have exemplified excellence in the field. In Rock Hill, Sergeant Johnson has taken the entire SRO program to the next level by putting students first in all decisions. He pushes his officers to always make the right choice for kids as well. He works closely with students at ATC, Dutchman Creek Middle School, Northwestern High School, Rollinson Road Middle School, Saluda Trail Middle School, Sullivan Middle School, and South Point High School. Sounds like Superman to me. In an effort to continually improve the SRO program, Sergeant Johnson has worked with Winthrop University Professor Brad Tripp to research the program and explore ways to make Rock Hill schools safer for everyone. Sergeant Johnson was recognized on June 14th at the South Carolina Association of School Resource Officers Conference in Myrtle Beach, and tonight, we proudly recognize him and the community in which he serves.
And he was unable...
Thank you. And he was unable to be here, but let's give him a big round of applause and thank you as well. That's the third time, I believe, we've tried to get Sergeant Johnson here, and so he continues to serve our community, and we appreciate that. In honor of the 20th anniversary of Grace Ministries, Reverend Tim Bowen and his congregation made a gift to benefit students in each of our 17 elementary schools. As an act of service in our community, the church donated $850 to help elementary students who need financial assistance to pay for lunch balances. Each school received a $50 check to make a difference for students in need. This gift illustrates that it takes the entire community, including the faith community, to make our school system function. We thank you, Reverend Bowen and congregation, for demonstrating one team, one mission, one Rock Hill. Come on up, Reverend Bowen. Thank you. We appreciate you so much. Tonight, I would like to introduce Mr. Gary Black. He is our new food service contract administrator and will work closely with the district's food service vendor, SFE. Mr. Black joins Rock Hill Schools after serving in various roles with South Carolina Department of Transportation, the U.S. Air Force, and National Guard, as well as Willmore and Piedmont Medical Center. Having a hard time reading. Come on up, Mr. Black.
Oh, you're... Good to have you here, sir. Can we get a picture with you? Oh, yeah. And then we want you to go and... Yes, sir.
The board would like to meet you, please.
Welcome to the meeting.
South Carolina Ready is a statewide assessment to measure college and career readiness. The standardized test is aligned to the South Carolina College and Career Ready standards for grades three through eight. On test administered last spring, Rock Hill Schools had 18 students achieve a maximum raw score on SC Ready assessments. Tonight, we recognize students who scored at the highest levels. A lot of brain power about to be recognized right here. So, students, I'm gonna ask you to come up and stand in front of our backdrop and remain there until all names have been called. Now, I'm gonna apologize if I get any names, if I mispronounce them, so please forgive me in advance, but I'll do my very best. The following students earned a maximum score in 2017-18. Isaac Howard, Castle Heights Middle School. Derek Thompson, Dutchman Creek Middle School. Rolando Ramirez Ramos, Evanport Elementary School. Isaac Moore, Evanport Elementary School. Lillian Thompson, Independence Elementary School. Isabella Sarn, India Hook Elementary School. Natasha Rick, Leslie Elementary School. Elijah Murray, Mount Holly Elementary School. Isabella Hodges, Old Point Elementary School. Ariel Anderson, Old Point Elementary School. Dylan Wyman, Old Point Elementary School. Jefferson Arivalo Garcia, Richmond Drive Elementary School. Brandon Smith, Saluda Trail Middle School. Zakaya Smith, Saluda Trail Middle School. Christopher Higgins, Sunset Park Center for Accelerated Studies. Miles Wilson, Sunset Park Center for Accelerated Studies. Gabriela Roman Martinez, Sullivan Middle School. And Luke Fayle, York Road Elementary School. Let's give these folks a big round of applause.
Congratulations. 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 Squeeze together as tight as you can. The little one in the middle, those are the police guys. I'll get one for the district, and then I'll get out of the way to go here. Watch him. I'll get that little boy out of there. Squeeze down, squeeze down. Keep on. Sorry. Yes, I can. Let's give these guys one more big round of applause.
You ready? You ready? Are you... Are you ready? Okay. Are you gonna do the same thing this year on the test this year that you did last year? Think you can do it? Absolutely. Absolutely. I want you to practice one thing with me. Ready? Okay, when I say three, I want you to say, "One team, one mission, one Rock Hill." Let's practice, and then we're gonna do the real thing, okay? On three. One team, one mission, one Rock Hill. Ready? One, two, three. One team, one mission, one Rock Hill. All right, that was the practice. That was the practice test. Ready? Okay, now I want you to do it as loud as you can. Ready? One, two, three. One team, one mission, one Rock Hill. Great job. Let's give them a... You may be seated. I would like for any parents of these fine young folks, for you to please stand, because it doesn't happen just without a lot of support. So, parents, please stand. If there are any teachers of these young folks in the room at this time, please stand. And finally, any administrators of these fine young folks at these schools, please Thank you so much, and chairman, it doesn't get any better than that.
Now, now's a good opportunity for those of you who have to go home and study and leave. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, I'll give you just a moment to get up and leave. Don't feel like you have to stay.
And one quick comment, too. The meeting is being livestreamed. It's on Facebook under Rock Hill Schools. So, if you had family members that couldn't be here, go on there and you can share the moment with them on Facebook. Hey.
Congratulations.
Good job. Good job.
Good work. Good work.
And congratulations, Mom and Dad, too.
Could I say one thing? This is truly a testament. My son had great early childhood education. If there's any way, we need to start pre-K and earlier.
I got one.
Yes. And plus, working with the parents and the teachers together, because every day after school, coming home from daycare, started with one little, two little, three little Indians, he could do math before he got into elementary school. Very good. So, it really is early childhood education. If there's any way they could ever get on the agenda to put more money into it, I'm all for it.
Yeah, Ms. Brenda at the CDC on Mount Galat, he was dysentery, was six months old, and she taught all that stuff to them from the time that they could crawl. And having people like that around has been a big help for these children out here, and I would wish it for every child to have the opportunity. And we are blessed. And the CDC Black Street, they were awesome. I would like that to happen to every child. If you need any help, I'll be there to help do it.
Great.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great day.
You have a good evening.
Next, we have citizen participation, which I've already mentioned, we'll deal with that at the end of the meeting. Next up is Consent Action Agenda, which includes the minutes of the August 13th work session, the August 15th called executive session, August 27th business meeting, approval of personnel recommendations, and approval of process for securing legal services. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Terry Hutchinson is moved and Wendy Cole is seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have action agenda items. First up is Approval to Eliminate Policy EEAC, Bus Scheduling and Routing. Moved by Mildred Douglas.
I second.
Seconded by Ann Reed. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is approved, seven zero. Next, we have Policies for First Read. I'd like to take the E-Policies together as a group, and we'll take any of them out for discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Could we please take out Policy EBCE and EBCE-R out of that grouping, please?
All right. Any others in that group? Now, we'll read the policies before... I'll go ahead and read them. First off is Policy EA, Support Services Goals, Priority Objectives. The next one in the motion would be ECAC, Vandalism and Theft. And Policy EEA/EEAC, Student Transportation and Bus Scheduling and Routing. And then Policy EHB, Data Records Retention. All right, here, no discussion. I entertain a motion to include just those policies in one motion.
Second.
Moved by Jane Sharp, seconded by Helena Miller. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. All right, now we'll go back up and deal with the Policy EBCE and Administrative Rule, School Closings and Cancellations. Ms. Miller?
Yes. So, we have gotten some input on this, and I've had some phone calls and emails on this one, too. People suggesting that we would be entertaining a policy to make the classes up electronically. And I think that it's important to state that there were five out of 81 districts in South Carolina that were piloting this, kind of the online makeup day concept that we have applied to the South Carolina Department of Education to do so, but we are not accepted into the pilot at this program right at this moment. I also think it's a beautiful idea on paper, but in order for me to be able to entertain an idea in the future about doing online makeup, we need to make sure that all our students actually have online access at home. Just because we supply the devices does not mean that they have internet access. And I think that that is crucial when it comes to online makeup days. We can't have that for just the kids that have internet access at their homes. So, thought that was worth stating, just because we've had feedback on it.
I'll comment. Some of the districts have Chromebooks, and they say that the lessons get loaded on before they leave, so they don't need internet access on some of the districts that are piloting it, so that...
But we don't. So, in our case, we would have to have online access.
Well, I don't know that that'd be worth... We need to explore just your issue there.
Oh, oh, I agree. It's just, you know, the online access is a hurdle that we would have to overcome and make sure that we're equitable.
I do have also an item on that same policy. It's the third paragraph down. It's new language, and the part that I think needs to be removed is the part that says the board chairman or vice chairman will be notified immediately. I think with technology and the fact that they really have no role in this, other than there's being notified by the board, that's something the administration doesn't need to worry about. And with the app and stuff, I think, you know, it'd be nice to have some communication to the whole board, but it's not... I don't think it's necessary with the app, and we should all have an app, just like everybody else, and that's pretty immediate. So, it'd be my recommendation to strike that sentence, and then that changes the next sentence, which you'd strike also. So, the last sentence would be, "Decisions shall be announced using all available communication media." And since you're not noted, you strike the chair and vice chair, you'd also strike "also." And I mean, it's not a big deal, but I just think there is no role for the chair or the vice chair, other than the individual board, and is everybody agreeable with that?
I move to approve with amended proposed changes.
Is there a second? Seconded by Jane Sharp. Discussion. All those in favor of Policy EBCE with the modification, raise your hand. All right, opposed? Were you opposed, Terry?
He raised his hand.
Raised it. Okay, so motion carries seven zero. Next up is Policy IKADD, Administrative Rule and Form, Content and Credit Recovery. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Mildred Douglas, seconded by Jane Sharp. I have surprisingly gotten a lot of contact from teachers on this. I wasn't expecting that, because we're really not changing the policy. But it's led to some discussions about... The one that really hit home that I didn't think about was the soft skills issue, that we get... And I've been on the Commerce Committee for a long time, and we get beat up about accommodations the schools make that the world does not. And credit recovery certainly is an accommodation. I'm not opposed to an accommodation for unusual circumstances, but I got enough comments to where teachers believe that students are gaming the system, that they know that credit recovery is available, that they don't put a good effort in during school, and then you can put an element in there the teacher has to approve, but the teachers feel like there's so much pressure from administrators, and that's who they work for, that they don't feel like they're in a position to object. So, that's a concern. The other thing is the fact that NCAA does not accept credit recovery. And I just wanted to really drive that point home. recovery is available, that they don't put a good effort in during school. And then you can put an element in there the teacher has to approve, but the teachers feel like there's so much pressure from administrators, and that's who they work for, that they don't feel like they're in a position to object. So that's a concern. The other thing is the fact that NCAA does not accept credit recovery. And I just wondered to really drive that point home, if we didn't accept it for athletic eligibility. You know, our mission is to prepare our students for successful futures. And anyway, I say all that to say I have concerns about this, but I think it would be important that we get teacher input before, either at or before the next work session, to make sure that teachers are on board with these changes. Because, you know, the high school teachers in the classroom are the ones that are really having heartburn over this policy.
I think there's some thoughtful input from teachers already. I agree, it'd be good to hear some more. I mean, you know, one suggests that we have a limit on the number of times you can do this, or some other things that maybe we need to discuss and consider. And you're suggesting we ask for additional input? Or what is your suggestion?
Well, my concern is that the email that went out gave the 17th as the date for people to respond. I know some have already responded, but, you know, it's important that we have that input for discussion at the work session.
No, I agree with you. I think, when I read it the first time, I thought, yeah, it's got an awful lot of loopholes.
I've gotten some feedback along the same lines as well. And I hear what you're saying about anecdotal, having our own athletes potentially gaming the system, or do that affect? What I would like to see is actual data, because, just because somebody says it is one way, doesn't mean it is so, you know? Is there any way for us, before the work session, to kind of get some numbers on how many students are we talking about currently? And just kind of make us see the big picture, so that we have some more data points to go for, for our discussion at the work session?
I would also be interested in how many multiple users, you know, we have, because that was one of the concern expressed here, of people using it on multiple courses multiple times. We could probably get that data, couldn't we?
Absolutely. We can, the data exists on two levels during the school year, as well as the summer programs. All that Ms. Morrison presented to us in our last session at the work session, all that data was credit recovery, because that's what we do in the summer. So we can put that in the hotline for you. We can get that information for you. Do remind us that our, you know, the, all the policies go out to all the users. We can certainly have our high school principals to talk more specifically with teachers and address it at their next meeting, and then certainly ask for that feedback sooner than the 17th, and get that to you.
Well, our meeting's on the 8th, so they really, if they could get it by the 4th of October...
We can do that. We'll put that back out with a corrected or modified timeline.
All right, good.
Let me ask one question, and that is, do we not still have the program where children, students can receive tutoring in the morning, lunchtime, and after school?
Yes, ma'am. Schools offer both very structured tutoring programs. We have an academic coach at each high school that supports students in that role during the day. Some of those coaches work before and after school, and then teachers, just in general, approach that differently. So then there's less structure, but still a tutoring program in place at each school. So schools handle that, depend on student needs, depend on teacher, but every school has the opportunity to provide additional tutoring support.
I'm thinking that if we continue, if we have that, then some of those weaknesses should be caught at that particular time, instead of in recovery and what have you, or signing up for recovery and credit.
And I know we all recognize that sometimes student motivation is an issue and a concern that we work through. It is a challenge for teachers and for principals, I think, to differentiate what and why students do and do not do sometimes, especially in their participation in a course. So I think we've got to make sure that our policies don't penalize unnecessarily.
And another thing, we had with the athletes, where, you know, if they didn't make a certain grade, then they would have to come off for a period of time until the grade has improved. Are we still looking at that, or have that been deleted?
Are you referring, we had a presentation in Northwestern where if it's, if a player was failing a class, they couldn't practice or play until they got that grade up where it wasn't failing. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
And that was one school and one program. And I understand Rock Hill High has done some, so I guess the issue is, are we doing anything like that in our high schools now?
Ms. Morrison, would you like to come and share some of that information with the board, please? And as she's coming forth, remember that State of South Carolina Athletic Association does have minimum requirements that all athletes must meet prior years and in season. And Ms. Morrison has gotten feedback from all of our high school principals of what they do currently, during the student's current participation in that particular sport.
I do, and I actually brought the South Carolina High School League guidelines and bylaws with me, if you wanted to hear about that as well. So we did, we checked with all of the high schools with the question, if you have an athlete who is not meeting academic expectations in a particular grading period, what happens? What happens with that athlete? And so the answer from all high schools was that there are tutoring programs in place, that coaches are asking for access to grades of those students, and that they have different policies about how they then make sure that those athletes come back up to where they need to be. So there is, in every school, there's some kind of tutoring program, specifically for athletes. And then, did you want to hear about the South Carolina High School League requirements? I'm seeing some nods. So I looked up, in their bylaws, students under academic requirements, students must satisfy eligibility requirements in the semester preceding participation. So credits earned in summer school approved by the Department of Education may apply for first semester eligibility, so our summer school does count for that. And then later on, in the academic requirements, it says, "A maximum of two credit recovery units may be used toward eligibility to include the two units presently allowed in summer school. A credit recovery course must be accepted to be eligible for credit, recovery credits the students must have received a minimum grade of 50. Credit recovery and completes must be completed by the second Monday in August," and it gives some deadlines and timelines for that. So one of the things that we had after our last meeting, and I heard your concerns, and we heard your concerns, and wanted to make sure that we addressed all of those, and we've been looking at some of the feedback and that kind of thing as well. We did actually, I gave a memo outlining some of the changes that we've made to make it more specific, so it's not cartwash. It is actually, there are some limits on it in terms of when students can actually do credit recovery, and how that means, and what that means. And then one of the principals actually asked that we put the South Carolina High School League requirements in there, just so people can actually see that as well, so everyone is aware of those eligibility requirements.
I would say that High School League has pretty low academic requirements as rule, and I'm not advocating a district possible. Richland, too, I think their students have to have a 2-0 average to participate. And of course, that's one reason why you don't see Richland, too, teams in state championships, at least not in football. I mean, possibly. But a coach that has academics as well, and this isn't addressed to the administration, but a coach has a lot of control over that grade. And a coach that puts academics with athletics doesn't have a problem with athletes needing to get credit recovery. And the program was win today. If you don't win in the class, you've got to win the classroom first, before you can win on the field. And so the academics was placed at a high premium.
Right.
And there may be some that won't advocate. I understand the High School League, but we all take pride in having no athletes needing to take credit recovery. That ought to be, that ought to be a measure that each coach has to face, as well as, you know, and that's part of the process that... But anyway, I'm, I just tell you, I'm going to prove it for tonight, but I do think I have a major concern, and we need input from teachers to make sure they're comfortable with it, that the things are there, and we need to take care of that at the work session. So if there are no other comments, then I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor of passing this for first read, and that is policy IKADD, administrative rule and form. Raise your hand. All right, motion carries seven zero. Thank you for getting that input.
Thank you.
And it's good, good data that was requested. I appreciate y'all asking for that. Next up is communications, which we don't have, and we have a report of the superintendent.
Just a couple of announcements that I'd like to share with the board, and for those watching. Earlier this week, Money Magazine released its annual top 50 list of best places to live, and Rock Hill was named the 49th, and is one of only two cities in South Carolina to make this list. The magazine says the following about our city. "Combining decorous southern charm with a vibrant art scene, Rock Hill is one of South Carolina's largest cities, as well as a thriving suburb of Charlotte, which is, which lies 25 miles away from the state border. The Getty's Art Center, a longtime downtown jewel, houses a pottery center and a community art studio, as well as the offices of this Hill City Church. A former courtroom on the second floor alternately hosts musical performances and church services. Residents look forward to the Come See Me Festival, a 10-day community celebration held every spring, featuring such diverse events like everything trucks and moonlight jazz and blues. We are proud of our city for this recognition and are excited to be part of the growth in the Knowledge Park area. On Tuesday, September 25th, tomorrow, at 6:30 PM, all seven candidates for the Rock Hill School Boards of Trustees will participate in a student-organized forum at Central Office. Student leaders from each of our high schools have joined together to plan this event in partnership with Ms. Jennifer Morrison, Dr. John Jones, and Mr. Michael Frost. While in-person attendance is encouraged, we want our viewers to know the two-hour-long forum will be streamed live on the Rock Hill Schools Facebook page and on the district website. On Wednesday, September 12th, our Instruction Department conducted a modern learner training with all district and school-level instructional coaches, using the LEAP OR learning environment, equitable resources, achievement, and Prepare for Success instructional framework. Principals and other district leaders have been participating in this training since the summer. On Thursday, September 27th, district leaders will be hosting the first Lunch and Learn in a series of informational sessions for area realtors. We believe this series of meetings will provide a rich opportunity to engage in dialogue with real estate agents about our school district and our unique programs that set our district apart from others in our area. On Friday, September 28th, district leaders will be hosting the first Listen and Learn in a series of informational sessions for teachers from across the district. We believe this series of meetings will provide a rich opportunity to engage and dialogue with teachers about our school district. Thankfully, the Rock Hill area received little damage from Hurricane Florence. As you are aware, student safety and security is our first priority, and we close school on Friday, September 14th, and Monday, September 17th, in light of forecasts and consultation with local emergency management officials and school district officials and our meteorologists. Our board-approved school calendar for 2018-19 includes makeup days for situations such as this, and tonight, I would like to remind everyone that we will make up Friday and Monday on February 15th and February 18th, 2019. For information to our community, please note that state law requires districts to make up the first three days missed for inclement weather or emergency situations. In the event a district misses additional days, there is a process to seek forgiveness of the missed days. For example, missed days four through six can be waived by the local school board; days seven through nine can be waived by the state School Board of Education; and days 10-plus can be waived by the state legislature. On Tuesday, September 25th, myself and the Executive Director of Exceptional Student Education, Dr. Nancy Turner, will be conducting an introductory training for ACES, Adverse Childhood Experiences, with all principals and leadership within the district. We will also conduct this training on Wednesday, September 26th, with all Central Office employees. This training is an ongoing, year-long effort that is part of the board's vision for our district. After an action-packed summer, the Build on the Rock website has been updated with photos. You're encouraged to visit the district's Capitol Building Program, Build on the Rock website, www.rock-heel.k12.sc.us/builtontherock for more information. This website provides status updates on active and planned construction projects in the district. On the page, viewers can see project descriptions, before and after photographs, and construction timelines. The school board will next meet on Monday, October 8th, for work session. The meeting will begin at 4:00 PM with a data review session and work session at 5:30 PM. The next business meeting will be Monday, October 22nd, at 6:00 PM. Meetings are streamed on our website and available for viewing on demand immediately following each broadcast. We invite our community to watch meetings on our live Facebook broadcast. This concludes announcements from the superintendent.
Ann, go ahead.
I'd like to, I'd like to compliment Mr. Michael Frost and the team of videographers who put together that outstanding, really truly outstanding piece of work. I think Jim mentioned it at our last meeting, but I hadn't seen it then. And since then, I have looked at it several times through its entirety. I am so proud to be able to say, "Good, good, good, good job." And I'm proud to have other people look at it, because it is such an outstanding, outstanding presentation. I didn't know all of the things that were going on either. I'm so proud of you, and I want you to know it. Thank you so much for continuing to do that kind of work for us.
And I believe Michael, as he is doing, and I knew he would, he would also give credit to Aaron Sheffield, and the team of working on these projects. I know he appreciates that.
Ann, thank you for your comments. I've got a question on the ACES training. Is it possible for board members that have not seen any of that, that could, that'd be available to them, one of those meetings?
Absolutely. Wednesday, I think we might have mentioned last meeting, that Wednesday would be probably the best opportunity, and that'll start at 8:15 this Wednesday morning in this section, if any board member would like to come and participate. Yes, ma'am.
And I would encourage any board member who has not seen it.
The, there'll be a, we'll show the resilience video, and then have a brief, so probably about 75 to 90 minutes total. And we'll start again at 8:15.
So I highly recommend that to board members. Also, makeup days, are we, how close are we to getting in trouble with seat time for the fall semester? Do we get an exemption on that? Or, because I know we already had a short class time to get it in for Christmas, but then missing two more days, does it, we're covered in that?
We are right now, but that's, we don't want to miss any more days.
All right. Thank you. Next up is a report of the work session, which was held on September 10th at the Central Office. We held a data session. We reviewed the first set of Section E policies for first read. We reviewed policy IKADD and administrative rule and form for first read. We discussed activity bus rental requests. We discussed the proposed process for securing legal services. We heard a presentation on interconnective system of supports and mental health. We received a summer programs report. We received an attendance report. We discussed the millage certification letter. Heard a career and technology education and programs presentation. We received advanced ed accreditation and strategic planning updates. We heard a South Carolina School Board Association Law Conference update. We discussed other and future business, and we held an executive session for personnel and property matters. Next up, we have a request to speak to the board. It's from, I said, Bakari Robinson and Derek Crawford, and it has to do with Roma football. And if you would, you know, state what... And if you would, you know, state what organizations you represent, where you live, and...
Well, I represent the Rama football program. I live in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm married with three kids, Assistant Pastor of Restoration Ministries in York, South Carolina.
Derek Crawford, born and raised here in Rock Hill, graduated from Rocket High in 2000. Father was 24 years in law enforcement here. I took on law enforcement, Chester Police Department. I left there. Now I'm a private security officer in Fort Mew School at Ocher Park Elementary. Married with four kids.
We want to come unite and talk to you about an incident, and first let you know a little bit more about our program. Our program started about three years, two, three years ago. We was in a tragic bus accident, many people know about it. There were several fatalities. Me, myself, I passed away, and God saw fit to bring me back, not once, but twice, in the same day. So I actually got two birthdays. But, and this program means a lot, not only to me, but to many other individuals. This program actually brought the first collegiate football to Rock Hill. This program also was able to get, last year, 31 out of 40 guys scholarships at four-year universities from various areas in the state of South Carolina. Another good thing about this program, that it has now fortunately been able to attract a lot of attention from young men that play, that play sports here in the York County area, which is, I feel like is a great opportunity for those that have missed out, with the amount of talent we have, but this is Football City, USA. Another thing, though, that, just to address about, about the program, is that our game yesterday was the accumulation of years of hard work bringing college football to Rock Hill. Unfortunately, following the game, the visiting team became very aggressive and hostile toward our players, our coaches, and the law enforcement officers that were there to keep the peace for our community. This escalated into actions of violence, when players from the opposing team assaulted our players and even attempted to attack the officers. In fact, members of that team were even fighting one another as they attempted to get the aggressors off the field. Some of the fans that were peaceful and friendly throughout the game came onto the field, which added to the scene of confusion. Thankfully, Rock Hill Police responded swiftly and deescalated the situation by arresting members of the other, of the visiting team. So, I mean, last night was a heartbreaking situation. I mean, we fought so hard to bring this to Rock Hill, and to put this together, and to have that situation take place, it really, I mean, it broke my heart. I really didn't sleep too much last night, just thinking about, why did it happen? How did it happen? What could we done to prevent it from happening? I sat down with the league today, and the league made a final decision, and they voted, the team's been voted out. I got a letter from the league, the Virginia Coast Academy program will no longer be part of the Coastal Post-Grad Athletic Association, the Big Coast Conference. They are, they are no longer part of whatever we do. We're taking steps within ourselves to, to make sure that an incident like this never happened again, by adding additional security whenever needed, to check IDs and other, you know, to check IDs and make sure that this is, is up to compliance. You want to say something?
Unfortunately, things do happen, and we can't control the actions of others. By me, prior being a former law enforcement officer, I understand that. And, you know, maybe there could have been different measures of security things put in place with more officers, everything, you know, looking to bring a family-friendly environment, and of course, this happens. For all the hard work that we put together, and, you know, me personally seeing two of our players die on the bus, and a young child and a bus driver, and I had to get airlifted myself, it's pretty heartbreaking, for me being born and raised here, and knowing that I played football here, and it's nothing bigger than being home playing football here, and bringing something like this to Rock Hill. We have good players, these guys, we give them second chance, second opportunities to, at their future, not just football. And these guys are very grateful and thankful, and the most important thing is me coming out here and Coach Ross, and giving our time and presenting to these young men to give them a second opportunity at life and at their future. And some of them come from hardships, come from struggles, and we enjoy seeing the smiles on their face that we're able to get them in a four-year school. And that's the most important, important thing to us. And then for this to happen, that's not how we planned it, you know, and like I said, unfortunately, we can't control actions of others, but the league has took steps to remove the program, and they have no dealings with them anymore. So that's pretty much what I have to say.
Okay, and then, to end this, we also were successful to create, when we created the Coastal Post-Grad Association, to also bring a group of programs together to create the first junior college association on the East Coast. There's not enough of junior college football programs around. A lot of these kids have to go to California, parents just don't have the money. So we, we're fortunate enough to provide this, to help those kids, because many of them would not go to school if it wasn't for football, especially in York County. And with this, this allows the kids to go to school, to get their grades, to get their grades up, or to get more training, so they can go on to the four-year universities. It just was a heartbreaking situation. We are deeply sorry about it, we apologize, and we had, we said we did take steps to, to improve on our end, to make sure that this, an incident like this never happens again. I mean, it just had me so heartbreaking, I was ready to, I couldn't sleep last night. I was deeply at the point where I was ready to just sit there and just cry all night long, because I died, to make sure this happened. And, I mean, the good Lord saw fit and sent me back. And for this to happen, it just, it just, it just took something from me, you know? And I just sat up and racked my brain all night, now what can we do to make this better? You know, because, I mean, these, these actions of the other individuals, you know, it was foreseen. I mean, we couldn't see it, I didn't know it was coming like that. But like I said, we have taken steps to improve. And we're going to actually, I'll just say that you, that you consider, consider in way that the impact that this program does have on the community? It has a very huge impact. Yesterday, we had an, you know, just, we only done a couple days of marketing, and a large crowd came out. And when that large crowd that came out, a lot of the young men that didn't know that this program existed came out and asked, could they, what did they need to do to participate? We told them, "You have to go to school." And that's one thing that we really push, you have, you have to get an education. Go to school, you go to school, we'll take care of the rest. We'll get you into a four-year university, so you can continue playing football, where you can continue getting your education. That's one of our main focal points, is education, 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 education. And like I say, we put a motto out there, it's been proven, it's successful, and it works. And we'd like to continue doing, doing that here in the Rock Hill area. And it's, I mean, the Rock Hill Police Department, the way they responded was awesome. They were awesome in what they done. And, I mean, and the help of the others that did help out there, I mean, we were grateful for it. It just, like I say, it was just for, it's just, it was just heartbreaking. But, you know, I mean, but the other, the other team had guys that were, the police took a few of them, of the other team, that I think they got detained, you know, for their actions. You know, none of our players were detained, and many of them were forced into, you know, we got them into the locker rooms and things like that. But we just thank God that we were able to put together a program that can help many young men, and for the future, that can help many more. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, other and future business, do any board member have any items that, for future discussion? Wendy?
Do we have a calendar yet for community visits?
I'm not aware of one. Dr. Cook, yes?
We put some recommendations in the hotline, and we can further discuss those and create that.
Anything else? All right, entertain a motion to go into executive session for property matters, real estate contract, real estate update.
Summoned.
Moved by Jane Sharp, seconded by Wendy Cole. We don't expect to be taking action coming out. We do not. So all those in...
Go ahead, continue on.
All those in favor of going to executive session, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0.